All right, we're on the record. Council Agenda Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of July 24th, 2018.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building and on the municipal website on December 20th, 2017, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the North Star Ledger on December 27th, 2017, and was forwarded by fax to the other local newspapers on December 20th, 2017. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipony.net.
Please rise for a flag salute. Ms. Peterson, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Carrify?
Here.
Also in attendance are Township Attorney Jim Lott, CFO Ann Cucci, Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, August 7th, 2018, 7:30 PM, Agenda Meeting. August 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM, Regular Meeting. Approval of minutes, Agenda Meeting, March 20th, 2018. Agenda Meeting, April 3rd, 2018. Agenda Meeting, May 1st, 2018. Regular Meeting, May 15th, 2018. And Agenda Meeting, June 13th, 2018.
We need a motion for that, Council President?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? So, motion to approve the minutes. Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Presentations, reports. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Council President.
I don't think that's on.
It should be working. It's not working? It's on, right?
Thank you for taking an interest in your government and being here this evening. When I made my first and only run for elected office last year, one of my primary motivations was addressing the structural imbalances and improper fiscal planning that plagued our local government for years. Exorbitant amounts of money were borrowed for our utility funds. Our legal fees approached $1 million a year, far ahead of similarly sized towns. Millions of dollars were shifted from our sewer and water utilities to create the appearance of low tax increases, all while increasing water and sewer fees that residents cannot deduct from their income taxes. This budget is a first major step in repairing the damage to our finances. In just our first year, our team has slashed legal fees, reduced our reliance on utility surplus, increased our investment income, and attracted new commercial ratables to our community. For years, our legal fees have hovered just under $1 million, double what our sister towns such as Wayne pay in legal fees. Frivolous lawsuits and outrageous consulting fees blew a hole in our legal budget that will take years to recover from. This budget reduces our legal expenses by over $100,000, with further cuts anticipated in coming years as we tie up existing litigation. As our legal fees increased, our water and sewer utility funds were consistently raided in order to create the appearance of lower taxes. This practice maintained artificially high fees that residents cannot deduct from their income taxes. Last year, over 3 million of water and sewer fees were used to balance a budget that increased spending without increasing sustainable revenue. These mistakes will keep us dependent on uncertain utility surplus for years to come. This budget begins to reduce our reliance on water and sewer fees, slashing our reliance by $300,000. Since January 1st, our staff in the mayor's office has handled over 450 resident issues through the Mayor's Action Center. For comparison, just 192 cases were logged in in 2017. Working with residents to solve issues ranging from potholes to trash pickups to housing issues, our staff has sharply increased resident services at minimal cost to taxpayers. In the year 2018, Precipiny leased an occupied office space that will have increased by nearly 1 million square feet. Companies such as John Guest USA, McCann Pharmaceuticals, and Diagnostic Stago have expanded to Precipiny, increasing our commercial ratables and reducing the overall tax burden on homeowners. The deal we reached with Teva Pharmaceuticals and their landlord, P3 Properties, was a collaboration between our administration, the state of New Jersey, and the business community. In bringing Teva North American Headquarters to Precipiny, we have demonstrated how teamwork between government and business can bring good jobs and tax relief and economic development to our township. On the issue of public safety, we have increased the number of police officers on patrol in our neighborhoods and protecting our schools. Not only will this reduce the amount of overtime we incur in the police department, but will decrease emergency response times and increase community-oriented patrols, such as the reinstated bicycle patrols on Beverick Road and Lake Precipiny. I am proud to work with our new police chief on these endeavors, and together we have already reduced overtime by $20,000 since March. Also note this, nothing is more important to me than the safety of our children in our schools. The increase in Class III officers on patrol in our schools will not only protect our children in the case of an emergency, but act as a deterrent. I want to thank Chief Miller and Superintendent Sargent for their swift and effective cooperation in this program. Some, including those who voted for a 4.2% tax increase just two years ago, will oppose this budget purely for political gain. That's to be expected in the hyper partisan times we live in, when those of your party are always right and those of the opposing party are always wrong. That's not the type of mayor I want to be, and I'm proud to lead a governing body on which those with opposing worldviews can work together for the benefit of Precipiny. Cleaning up the mistakes of the past is never easy, and I'm not naive enough to believe that I won't make my mistakes on my own. This budget begins to rectify those mistakes and puts us on a path towards fiscal health, premium bond ratings, and stable taxes. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Council President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, anyone on the council? Any council members?
I have a library report, but I can wait until you.
Township Attorney, Mr. Lott?
I have no report.
Thank you. Mrs. Saman's not here tonight. Township Clerk, Ms. Madden?
Just a very quick report. In the next coming weeks, we are currently working with ShredIt. We are looking to implement another ShredIt event. This ShredIt event is only for the archives. It is not a free ShredIt like the township does. I just want to make that distinction. And we plan on destroying between 100 to 200 boxes. We'll chop the total number of boxes to be destroyed since my tenure here to about 1,500 boxes. So currently, we're working on getting that all updated, and at the same time, we are trying to implement the scanning throughout the township, so we'll keep you posted as to how that goes, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, going back to Town Council, I didn't know where to fit this. Just to respond to one of the items in the mayor's speech, he alluded again to the 4.2% increase that occurred a few years ago. You and I both voted for that 4.2% increase, and I pointed out several times already, and you remember this, that the reason we had that increase was because the library shortfall of $850,000 in health benefits is why we had to have that increase. It was not the municipal portion of the budget. We absorbed the increase by the library.
Yes.
Well, let's, okay? Yeah, let's understand what happened with that. The town, for several years, the library was given the incorrect premiums by the township to pay for their health insurance and their pension.
Not really. They're talking very loud.
Can you just speak up into the mic?
Yeah, I said that, the $800,000, because the township was giving the library the incorrect premium amount to pay. And that went on for many, many years. And then, at the time, when it was determined that the administration had not been providing them with the right premium amount, that by that time had escalated to the $800,000, then it was required. So I think it was diligence on the administration's part as well. That's all I have to say.
Well, that's partially correct. When Mayor Luther discontinued our health benefits from the state plan, and we went to self-insurance, the township developed a cap bank for insurance, since we were going to be self-insured. You're right, Mayor Luther and the administration at that point in time did not instruct the library that they should do the same thing. The difference in their premiums were not that great for a few years until the library employees, two library employees, experienced extremely high medical costs. One of them was $1,000 a day for a pill.
For cancer diagnosis.
Yes, yes. It's unfortunate. But now, those very large medical bills caused a big skew. And thanks to Ellen Salmon and Ann Cucci, they're the ones that figured out what was wrong and then instructed the library. All right? It was not, you're right, it was not the library's fault.
Right.
And until they had extraordinary, two employees with extraordinary illnesses, nobody picked it up.
Right.
You're correct. But in the meantime, when Ann and Ellen did discover it, okay, we had an $850,000 shortfall, which the township picked up, and that was why we had the 4.2% increase.
As a self-insured entity, the town picked up the $800,000 because the town is self-insured. So there was a shortfall of $800,000 that could have come from...
No, that was a shortfall in the library's medical. They're not in the same medical plan we are. They have their own plan.
Right, that's part and parcel.
Two separate plans.
All right.
All right, I didn't mean to hold it up, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Township Officers, committees, reports?
I have a good segue to the library's audit. Andrew Pascal of Samuel Klein &amp; Company provided a printed audit report and gave a brief presentation about the revenue and expenses for 2017. Mr. Pascal also commented that, quote, "The library has excellent internal controls over the finances and budget, and that there are multiple checks and balances in place," close quote. The auditor reminded the board that they are given a monthly check register/bill list and a statement of expenditures and income that they check over and approve or question. The board also approves the yearly budget by resolution. The mayor's office receives a board packet of materials on a monthly basis, as does the council liaison, so that the library's financials are easily accessible to the Township Council and the Township Administration. As with all public documents, these can be requested at any time. An audit is completed yearly, sent to the township, and filed with the New Jersey Division of Local Government Services. The only audit recommendation is that, quote, "A new lease agreement be established for the Mount Tabor branch," and that is because the auditors want this pending expense off the library's books. To that end, I have eight copies. I will pass them out to the clerk. Mr. Lott, if you would.
Thank you.
My colleagues this way. Thank you. Everyone gets one. There's one for the BA, the mayor. And also, it's available at the library.
Thank you. Okay, bids taken. June 21st, 2018, Police Off Duty Detail Management System for the Police Department. June 21st, 2018. WWTP Generator Improvements. July 12th, 2018, Grafton Park Improvements. To be taken, July 31st, 2018, Lease of Public Property. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Budget, second reading. Mr. DePiro?
Ordinance 2018, colon 08, an ordinance of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey, calendar year 2018, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48, colon 4-45 dot 14. Notice for the above ordinance was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, on June 22nd, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the June 19th, 2018, Regular Meeting. Motion to accept the above ordinance.
Second. Sorry, second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call. Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, are they voting on the ordinance for the cap bank? We're under the budget now, so you're up for roll call.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2018, colon 08.
Second.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, at this point, we're voting for the public hearing on the cap bank?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Okay, so, motion passes. The floor is open to the public to speak on this ordinance only. Okay, see, no one's come forward, entertain a motion to close? Oh, we have somebody, we have somebody? Okay. Mr. Venedzi, I just want to remind you, it's just for this ordinance only. Yep?
My name is Bob Venedzi. I live at 102 Brooklawn Drive. I just want a little more explanation about what's going on with this cap business. Are you, you have, you're using, are you using up banked cap in order to exceed your budget allowance this year? Is that, is that what we're saying here? And how much?
One second, Dan.
Yeah.
How much are we using and how much is going to be, how much is left after this is over?
What this is...
Are those your only questions?
Yeah, yes.
It's a good question. It's confusing. And what happens is that the township is allowed to, if they don't go over their cap, okay, they're allowed to bank it for so many years, okay, but that expires. So at this point, we're not using any, we didn't have enough in the 18, we're not using all the caps, so we're able to, we want to be able to establish to go over the 2% to 3.5%, and that's common, that's, we put it aside for a rainy day. The only amount of money that we are using is from the 2015 cap bank, and it's $54,000 going over the levy. That's it. It's just $54,000 in the bank. We have $2 million still left in the cap bank. Now, that doesn't mean that it's a license to spend. What it means is that they have the right to use that, but not, they have to vote for that, they have to authorize expenditure, okay?
You know, I've seen this, this has happened before, where one year we get a zero increase, and that puts money into the cap bank, and then, in subsequent years, the cap, you know, the money in the cap bank gets used up. So really, we never really got a zero increase because instead of, you know, instead of having a 2% increase and a 2% increase, we got a zero and a four. Well, it's a wash. You know, I mean, there's a lot, there's just a little gamesmanship going on that I would like to see stopped or explained better, or, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, see, no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2018, colon 08.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, this is a vote for closing the public hearing at this point with regard to the cap bank ordinance?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani? This is a vote...
Yes.
Okay, good. Ms., thank you.
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy, thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Okay, resolution passes. Who's making the motion for the public hearing? Mr. DePiro, no, he's still going.
No.
Yeah, it's still saying, part of the same thing.
Oh, just open for public hearing.
Do you think so?
So this is, okay, so this is a public hearing on the 2018 budget as it is now, and we're going to entertain a motion by Mr. DePiro, and we're going to second?
Motion.
Second.
Public hearing on 2018 budget.
Okay.
I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani, this is a motion to open the public hearing for the budget for 2018 as it stands currently?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
So the floor is now open for any comments from the public on the 2018 budget. Okay, if you'd like to come forward, you'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and sign in.
Nicholas Homiak from Lake Hiawatha. I assume this is the, about the, if you live in a $319,000 home, you're going to get an approximately $64 a year increase? Is this what this is about?
$309,000.
Yes, this is, you're correct. That's basically the premise, yes.
Okay, and all the, last week and everything, all the opposition that went on and everything, it doesn't seem like a lot to contribute to the common good of the town and not to have anybody laid off in the services. But I remember last week, there was quite a bit of, you know, people are going to go bankrupt and everything, and they're going to have to get second jobs, so it seems kind of ridiculous. It seems like a political attack against something that was necessary that the other administration didn't have enough courage to do because, you know, everybody's tax crazy in the United States. But how did the water view the $3.5 million that we paid for the commercial value of something that should have been zoned? How does that kick into it? Because we didn't get any money from the county, and we didn't get any money from the state because they didn't want anything to do with it. So how does that $3.5 million affect this budget? How does the pilot deal that the other administration, the UPS, that profited, I believe, $14 million or something in 2014 or '15, and we gave them a pilot deal here in Precipiny? How did that affect the budget? And how does all these other corporate developments around here at Precipiny, how are they benefiting Precipiny in any way that we have to have a budget increase at all? But I would contend that if I lived in a 300 and, what is it, thousand?
$309,000.
$309,000 home, and I didn't want to pay $64 a year toward my municipality's common good, that's called me, myself, and I cheapskate. So I can't understand how there's all this resistance. So I'll leave it at that, and I guess I won't have to pay the $64 because I only live in a $195,000 home, so maybe I don't have the right to say anything because I don't have to contribute $64 a year to my community. So, pretty pathetic, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, there we go. So I just want to take the second to say there's clearly going to be a lot of discussions here. Let's avoid any yelling from the audience, just so we can maintain order. Mr. Homiak, if you could just sign in.
I'll sign in before I leave.
Nah, you know what, why don't you just come up, sign in now?
Good evening, everyone. I find it very disturbing that at a meeting of a month ago, Mr. Homiak is here, don't seem to bother him what it costs anybody else. I have a different perspective on this. I'm an empty nester. I'm a senior citizen. I have a home with four empty bedrooms. If the prices, and I've got three articles here which I'll allude to later, if I sell this house that my wife and I are the only two living in, someone is going to buy it with three or four children and move into this house and put a burden on our schools. I may be incorrect, but I think approximately $12,000 a year it costs to educate a kid. That means I'm selling my home, someone's going to buy it with three children, and it's going to cost the taxpayers $36,000 a year more. The last meeting I was at, Council President Paul Carrify indicated to me that he spoke to 172 people in town. I don't know who these people are, but two days after that conversation in that meeting, I didn't write this article, it was in the North Star Ledger, about the taxes in the state of New Jersey, how it's driving seniors out. I also got an article here, which I didn't write, don't know who wrote it, from the Wall Street Journal, all condemning the tax increases in the state of New Jersey, and although you have nothing to do with the state of New Jersey, you're following its sleep. Is it doing the same thing? All I know is that if I get $100 a week, it's hard for me to spend 120 and not have a problem. If there are things that we can cut and forget about the cops and forget about the different workers in town, wherever there's waste, wherever there's people getting jobs that aren't needed, we don't need them. I say to you, Mr. Carrify, you said you had 172 people you spoke to. I got six senior citizens on different parts of this town. After the statement, you told me that didn't seem to bother anybody that their taxes were going over. I spoke to a few people here tonight. Their property taxes went up $300 or $400 for the quarter. I don't know where the $64 is coming in. I don't know. I don't have any idea. All I'm saying to you is I got five or six other senior citizens in all areas of this town. They canvassed their neighborhoods. Not one person was happy with the results of the new tax. Not one. So when you tell me nobody, it don't bother anybody, I don't know who you've been talking to and what our council is thinking about this. You chased the senior citizens out of Precipiny because of all these high taxes. You're going to go worse in debt, whether it's through you or through the school budget, you're making it a problem. If anything, you should help support the senior citizens in the towns. And I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Shiddell, just to answer, just to answer your...
Mr. Shindel, just to answer, just to answer your question, where the $64 come from versus what, the totals numbers that you came up with? Like I previously stated, we only control 21.3...
I understand that.
Well, that's your $64.
I understand that.
Okay. Well, you just asked where it came from. I'm telling you where it came from.
But if I may, if I may respond.
Go ahead.
The problem with that is, by senior citizens moving out in droves, and I didn't write this article in the paper, by them moving out, it's doing exactly what I just said. People are buying their homes like someone like me with two or three kids moving in, and it puts the burden on the school board.
I'm just saying, I was just answering your question.
Yes, but here again, we gotta pay them taxes regardless of what it is. If you could stop that, it would help the taxpayers. Whether we give it to you or the Board of Ed, we're still paying it. That's the bottom line.
And, um...
I'm not saying it's the Board of Ed. I'm not saying in any shape or form it's the Board of Ed. I'm just telling you that we only control 21.32%.
I understand that. I know that very well, and the point I'm making is, you shouldn't even raise it to $64 or $100, whatever it is, I'm ending out, so you can protect the senior citizens.
And...
In Parsippany and the state.
Okay, all right.
Can you, can you tell us if there are any programs that are currently in place that help freeze the taxes of senior citizens to reduce the burden?
There is. There's that PTA form that you could fill out to freeze your taxes. You can do that every year. You just have to visit the assessing office, and they will help you. They're very open to help you when you freeze your taxes. It takes about a year, but it's for the seniors. Please come in and do that.
But that's a, there's a, you, there's a maximum...
There is a minimum, yeah.
There's a maximum salary that you qualify for that.
Correct, but some of the people who can't...
I don't know anybody that can live in Parsippany and, and be under that maximum salary.
I have, I have to tell you, there's very men, there's a lot of people who come in.
Really?
There really is, and we, we do, um, come to the assessing office. They're very open to this, and they do help. They'll help you fill out the form and everything. Right? Right, Nick? Okay.
Really? No way.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm 75 and don't get it, though. I gotta pee. Mary Perzicki, uh, Marcela Road in Parsippany. Uh, I think the point is being missed here. Everybody who lives in the state of New Jersey knows that we are the highest taxed rate state going. Everybody wants a little bit of our nickel. You do at $64, the Board of Ed does on whatever they're going to do. Well, when I got my tax bill, it's not $64, even though it's estimated. It's $157 on this quarter, and I am guessing it will be that, around that figure or maybe a little less. And the problem being that the residents of the town, of the state of New Jersey, say enough is enough by nickeling and diming my money. I have to find ways to pay that, and so does everybody here, whether you're a senior, you're a young couple coming in to New Jersey, or, or you're, you're middle-aged. Everybody says, okay, it's only $64, it's only $50. Hey, for $19, you can take care of a dog that needs food, or you can take care of, of whatever's out there. And that's what the frustration is, and we say, we don't have too much power on a federal level anymore or on a state level, but on a local level, we feel that we have a voice 'cause we come here. We come here to you people saying, how much more can you expect to take from our incomes, no matter what age group you are? And that's what I think the council, the Board of Ed, and every person in a governing body has to consider. How much more can you do before people do move out of New Jersey? Before corporations don't come into New Jersey? You can give them all kind of packages, but in 15 years, they'll say goodbye to you. They're not gonna pay that kind of tax. So it starts at home. That's what we're trying to say. It starts here with you. Thank you.
Hello. Irene Kripta, 14 Eduardo Court. Um, I was here a month ago, and I had asked, I keep hearing about the 64, which is part of the 20% for the town, but being that all of us will have to pay also the seven, the 2% of the 70%, did we ever get to the budget for the, uh, school? Did we ever get to what the full amount is that will increase? Because 64 is only a small portion of it, so it's, we're not just talking about 64. And what I would add to the gentleman over there is, as much as $64 seems like a very, very small amount of money, I would say the problem is that we are already overtaxed. I mean, way overtaxed. And, and as we all have heard, is that straw that breaks the camel's back. It's like, where is it at? Where does it end? I mean, these kids are in elementary school right now. When, in 20 years, they go to buy a house, what, what is it gonna be? $40,000 a year to live here? I mean, where are we going? And I understand there's always a reason for everything, but there is waste everywhere. I'm sure there is waste here, never mind the school system, don't even get me started, but, I mean, we, it's not, it's never been about revenue. We keep throwing money at things, and especially at the school system. Then we perform a, what, number 16 and 26 in the world, which is disgusting. I mean, I don't have children, I don't mind paying high taxes to educate our children. I'm proud to be a naturalized American citizen, but I wish we did something good with the money that I pay in taxes, because just throwing money at everything is not the solution. Uh, one of your biggest problems is those multiple choice tests that most of the world doesn't, doesn't exist. Where I was educated, I've never seen a multiple choice test. I tell you right there. It's much easier, school over here is a joke, becoming a teacher is much easier, and those are the, those are the results. So, like I said, I don't mind educating our kids, I don't mind spending the money to educate our kids. I care of Ameri, about America. I'm a proud American citizen, but I wish we had more to show for, for the money that we pay. And again, um, we need to talk about what the full amount is, not just the $64. Please, thank you.
Just need you to sign in, ma'am.
Hi, Isabella Alfano, 8 New England Drive. I had to write things down today, so I don't lose my train of thought. I was also speaking with my neighbors and friends and moms, and I belong to the Moms of Morris County group. Shout out to anyone who's mom of Morris County. Uh, it's a Facebook that you kinda just reach out to other parents and kinda get a perspective on how people are feeling about X, Y, and Z. We also, it's, it's about, um, 5,000 members strong, and we kind of collectively talk about everything. We blog about, um, where we should take our children to soccer, where do we think we should take our kids to jujitsu. It's a wonderful resource, but it's also a conversational, um, platform. I can say that the feedback I have received on the tax hike is as follows. And it's interesting that Ms. Shindel mentioned your 100, I thought it was 175, but in my statement, I thought that that number, uh, really resonated with me because I wondered, um, I'm curious, who are the 175 people that Mr. Karifi polled and, and received such overwhelming support of his tax agenda? I'm curious, who are these 175 people that Mr. Karifi spoke to? Has other members of the council also reached out to the same 175 people? Did you each do your own public opinion survey on the proposed budget? I wanted to share with you an article of how millionaires are fleeing California after the tax hike in their state. I actually have copies for everyone here. Taxpayers are tired of being burdened with your tax and spend mentality. Since Mr. Nick Homiak, and guess what, darling? I put you in here. I put you in here because last time, he was the one waving the $5 in the air. I wanted to remind you and him that my estimated bill cannot be covered with $5. On July 10th, we were told by Ann Cucci to disregard the estimated tax bill we received as it was not accurate, that the council were still waiting for the Board of Education to finalize their budget to ensure that the estimated bill would be close as possible to what was originally forecasted. However, one of the Moms of Morris County said with a great deal of certainty that the Board of Ed already finalized their budget and had submitted its final numbers to the township way before that July 10th agenda meeting. When will we receive the revised estimated tax bill? I have not received my final version. However, the erroneous estimated bill I had previously received specifically told me that payment is due August 1st. Since I have not received communication from the township or revised estimated tax bill, will the taxpayer still be required to pay the incorrect amount? Since the township is two months late in submitting their budget, will the taxpayer also be given that same flexibility in paying their tax bill? The mayor has received accolades for bringing Teva Pharmaceuticals to Parsippany. However, their move to Parsippany seems more like a one-sided love affair between Teva and the taxpayer. Teva will receive corporate tax rebates and up to $10 million in tax incentives that we, the taxpayer, will not receive. Nick mentioned two weeks ago, and, um, that Parsippany has already exceeded their 40 million gallons of water usage. We are now at a water deficit and using our reserves. Nick also mentioned that Teva will not be allowed to, should not be allowed to use our resources, and why should they not be held accountable to pay for that service? That will be a burden that us, the taxpayer, will have to absorb as well. Four days ago, there was an article that New Jersey State Senator Bob Smith, Smith will be introducing legislation that will levy a tax on tax, on tap water in an effort to fix state's aging pipes. I brought copies of that, of that article for you guys to read as well. So let me get this straight. Parsippany does not have enough water for our current residents, and now we have a plan to bring in Teva that will receive tax breaks that us, the taxpayers, will not get. New Jersey state legislators are not talking about taxing taxpayers for tap water...
One minute. Yep, one minute.
...that Teva will not have to pay for, but we, the taxpayers, will have to pick up the tab. Well, Nick, I wanna tell you, you're right on your opinion on Parsippany on the water supply, but like my father used to say, even a broken clock is right twice a day. With that said, I wanna additionally say this. Uh, I am not against corporate corporations coming into Parsippany. I think it's wonderful. I've personally been employed 27 years for corporations. I, um...
Thirty seconds.
Yes, and with that said, I think we need to just look at how we give out tax incentives, but put taxpayers first. Thank you.
Good signing after.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, comment a little bit on the impact of raising taxes on real estate. Now unfortunately, our taxes are dependent upon what the cost of our homes are, the assessed valuation. Now, of course, many states in the United States do not utilize that particular method of having taxes. In fact, I think it's archaic that you are paying taxes on how high, at a particular time, your house is valued at, which is the assessed valuation. At this particular time, just to bring up one point, in a town of Mountain Lakes, there are 82 homes up for sale. Because of those 82 homes, yes, granted, they are very high-priced homes, and the taxes range anywhere from the very low of, say, $12,000, $13,000 to $34,000. Now, I would think that that might have an impact on why they are not selling. It has become an emergency, actually, in Mountain Lakes, and they have held many meetings with the real estate agents and the owners of Mountain Lakes, because this has never happened before. And, and the idea mostly is the fact that taxes have gone up, whether it's gonna be the state or local. It can't, there is going to be a particular time when it can't go any further. Now, we all know that the taxes that are brought in are based on assessed valuation. I don't wanna cause a paddock, but according to the real estate associations, then the next two years, real estate homes are going to drop tremendously. That's going to mean something like we had 10 years ago, when everybody was looking for new assessments because the value of the homes weren't worth anymore. Now, in order for you to bring in the amount that you need to run the town, you're gonna have to change the tax rate. And when that happens, that could be suicide, and that could be a problem. I just think that, in this day and age, we should be looking at not how to keep taxes the same, not even raising it, because I think, I think that the standard is, well, look, here it is that we're charging now, we'll just raise it a little bit. Let's take the line, line by line, and we'll just increase it a little bit. It won't be that bad. I understand that a lot of associations, organizations do that. Let's bring it up to 2.5% because after all, inflation has got 2%. Uh, we can do with that. But I think in order, that it's very important to, to start to look at line items and say which is a way we can bring it down. If you happen to be a corporation, which basically towns are a corporation, if you were Pepsi-Cola or Coca-Cola, and all of a sudden you got price increases on your ingredients or your packaging, you're gonna take a look at it, and you're gonna say, you know what? I better do something about it. I'm going to have to look and see, maybe we're gonna have to change the formulation, which they have done, in Pepsi-Cola and Coca-Cola, in order to keep their pricing the same. But they're gonna change the packaging, go to plastic instead of, instead of glass. But they have to make these changes because if they don't, it's suicide. And I just think that if this, if we don't look in the future about this, I hate to say it, but it could be suicide.
Sir, I need you to, uh, sign in. Sir, I, I don't know, what's that gentleman's name?
Mr. Kimmy. Mr. Kimmy, you could sign in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Thomas. Uh, I live in Led, 2 Ledger Court. 1994, I moved into Parsippany, into a $300,000 house. My tax was $6,700. Two weeks ago, or maybe three weeks ago, I got the tax bill from Parsippany Township. It was $4,000 for a quarter. That means $16,000. Please tell me where we are going. We are keep on increasing the tax and kicking out all of us from Parsippany, and it's going to be like another, another Mountain Lakes, like as the other gentleman said. Did you ever think about cutting the cost, cutting the waste? I can tell you one example of the waste where it is. If you go to the recycle place next to the police station, nobody check the driver's license. Other township people come and dump their garbage right there. It's a waste, a lot of waste. You have to think about how to cut the waste, how to cut the cost, and not only increase the tax, please think about how to reduce the tax. My brother live in Michigan, and he told me their tax went down because the township worked very hard, and the tax went down. My friend lives in Lawrence Township in, uh, in Mercer County. Their tax went down. My friend lives in Monville. Their tax is down. Parsippany tax is going up. I'm telling you, all the gentlemen sitting here, this is the first time I'm coming for a council meeting because my tax bill was first for a one-quarter, $4,000. We had a meeting, our neighborhood, day before us today. We are not going to forget this. I'm telling you, my fellow members, we never going to forget this. Cut the tax, not the increase. Thank you.
Sir, sir, you, sir, you stated, you stated you bought your house, you stated you bought your house in 1994, correct?
Yes.
For $300,000?
Yes.
If you don't mind me asking, what is the value of the house now?
Maybe five, $600,000.
Okay, thank you.
Ken Dolstein, Winfield Drive. Uh, I just wanna say, nobody likes to pay taxes, any taxes, and as taxes go up, obviously, it gets more and more irritating. But I am gonna say this. I know every single person here on the council, some better than others, but I have very, very good faith that you have done your utmost to look at every single line item and to look very hard to cut, and if there was something... And if there was something, if there was a way to cut, I have faith that you took it and that you did it. And I would like to say to the people who are complaining about this, that look at the line items, form your own committee, look, reexamine, audit, everything that the town council has done, and see, and ask them all the questions, and I'll answer all your questions, see what you can find in the way of waste that, that you can bring to the council and try and lower the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Do no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
I know, we still have people, we still have people.
Loretta, we're still in the public hearing on the budget as it is currently, so stand by.
Okay. Thank you.
Pat Petacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I did have some questions from the last meeting that never got answered. I was requesting information into a merit increase that apparently was not on your merit increase form, right? I asked for verification. I also questioned some overtime of 152 hours on one particular individual. And I asked for a recap on the No Country Club and how we are handling it now. As far as who's going to... Oh, I'm sorry. I, I asked information on the No Country Club for it to be explained as to what exactly is happening with the money, with the improvements, who's working there, who's paying for what. I would definitely like a better understanding of it at this time. I've been sitting through these meetings. I wasn't here for all of them this year.
Pat, if you could speak into the mic, please, thank you.
Yes. Um, and I do agree, and I saw you up here working and trying to find areas to cut things back and mentioning them. And then you just did take the time to do that, so I, I do give you kudos for that. I know it's hard for people to understand, but what's even harder for me to understand is the fact that, uh, we get, uh, state taxes, federal taxes, municipal taxes, school taxes, this tax, this tax, and this tax. Every year it raises, no matter what tax it is, it raises. And I do feel bad because we, the poor slobs out here, are not getting the increases that a lot of other people are getting. So in reality, a lot of our paychecks are going and going and going down because we are paying out all these taxes. It's not just a municipal. I just wanted to make that clear. But I did see an effort made and I do thank you for that effort. Not happy, but I do thank you for it.
Thank you, Pat.
I want to start out by saying, Mayor Soriano, I'm glad you decided to show up. Where have you been hiding? Haven't been to any of the council meetings before today to discuss budget matters or the township's financial state. Is it that you can't handle the public outrage over the historic tax increase? And Council President Paul Karifi, why did you roll over and play dead for Mayor Soriano's tax hike and rubber stamping the mayor's nepotism jobs handed out to his inexperienced pals? You keep claiming you spoke with residents who are rightly concerned with your and Mayor Mike's historical tax hike. But Mr. Karifi, did you forget to tell our concerned residents that $500,000 in budget overruns were solely for Mayor Soriano's loyal campaign handlers who have no professional experience in their respective patronage jobs? Pat, Mr. Karifi, did you also fail to tell the taxpayers that at least 250,000 of additional budget overruns was spent on abusive and unnecessary overtime? Mr. Karifi, were you actually honest with the public and inform them that $368,000 was being paid out to your brother, James Karifi, who is the same guy who stole confidential and sensitive police information from our Parsippany Police Department and coincidentally worked feverishly for Mayor Soriano's campaign? Mr. Karifi, did you fess up to taxpayers that your brother still owes the township almost $200,000 spent on what the court deemed a frivolous lawsuit against the township? Mr. Karifi, did you inform our concerned taxpayers the township just recently spent an additional $50,000 on your brother, James Karifi, just to have the legitimate court case against him dismissed? Mr. Karifi, you have been nothing but a bobblehead for Mayor Mike Soriano despite your false claims you made several budget cuts and are a fiscal conservative. Please explain to me and the rest of our township in detail what, what budget cuts you made. You can't, Mr. Karifi, because you lost all control of your budget and you, Mr. Karifi, will go down in Parsippany's history as the only Republican council president to be a certified lapdog for a liberal democratic mayor.
Mr. DiLorenzo, first off, I see that you're reading word for word what Mr. Valori handed to you. Okay? I can see that. So obviously, you must be Mr. Valori's lapdog. Okay? You seem, I'm asking you, why, why you're standing up here sweating so bad? Because you had to keep looking down at the paper that he handed to you. Okay? Secondly, you bring up $500,000. A lot of your information is incorrect. Thirdly, my brother was cleared years ago, cleared years ago, of any wrongdoing. So, all your information that you're getting from Mr. Valori, who's standing behind you, probably holding you up right now, okay, is incorrect and you know it is. So you are the lapdog, sir. Okay?
Lou Valori, 36 Gathers Hill Court. Council President Karifi, let's say something for the record.
Right.
Mr. DiLorenzo's speeches, it was his speech. Okay? What I will tell you this, you're the council president. I came here three weeks ago and offered some suggestions in regards to cutting your budget. You have about a half a million dollars in nepotism jobs for unqualified individuals, but you are the council president who says nothing about those jobs. You had folks coming up here for the last couple of weeks in council meetings here on the budget where Mayor Soriano was nowhere to be found. Your council vice president did mention, well, let's hold off on the vote and maybe we'll discuss it. Your budget is historically late. You're the council president, you lost control of your budget, you lost control of salaries. And let's just face it, it might hurt a little bit. Your brother did get over on a lawsuit. He shouldn't get his $368,000 because that lawsuit was bogus. There's a pending $200,000 he owes the town. Okay? Do the math yourself. There goes your million dollars. And not only that, your, your, your budget was over on overtime. Okay? As a matter of fact, did Mayor Soriano get a brand-new car just issued to him? Did he? Yes or no?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, you're not aware of that? Did you know that Mayor Soriano spent taking his car into New York City with the EZ Pass on the taxpayers' dime? That'll be something up at the next meeting. But the reality is, you're the council president. No one's up here speaking on my behalf. They're all free-minded individuals. Okay? If you can't handle the truth in regards to you losing control of the budget and you're historically late on the budget, that's your problem. You own it. And just remember, the 4.2% increase, you were all in favor of that when that budget was voted on. This is your budget. You won over historically and you went into the cat bank. So you have to live with it. Shame on you.
Just let me say something. I think last week...
First off, Mr. Valori, you were the council president the last two years. The budget was also late also. Mr. Paluso vividly brought that up both years. Okay? So, right back at you on that one. All right? Secondly, the $500,000, there will be other things addressed. So everything you basically said will just be squashed in a few minutes. Go ahead.
All right. Well, just let me say, I think that we put that to rest, that your $500,000 claim was incorrect, and we went through it point by point and indicated that there was not a $500,000 increase. In fact, there is even an addition error in it. So, Mr. Valori, we'll take your comments under advisement, but I think you ought to check your figures before you come and present something to the council.
Okay, you're done.
I think you're done. I think you're done. Right? You remember that, right?
Mr. Valori, you're done. Your time is done.
Motion to close...